Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, June 17th, Long Meadow School Committee Meeting. Mass General Law allows for remote participation at public meetings until June 30th, 2027. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. School Committee members, when I call your name, please say "here" for the record. Jamie Hench? Jamie, are you with us?
Here. Sorry, it was taking me a little while to get my mute off.
No worries. Adam Rosenblum?
I am here.
Thank you. Kate Bean?
Here.
McKeele Fitzgerald?
Here.
And Emily Hansen?
Here.
All right. Perfect. We will begin with the Pledge of Legions. All right. So, before we kick off tonight's meeting, we wanted to take a moment to wish our friend, Diane, a wonderful and well-deserved retirement. We will miss your ongoing dedication, knowledge, and expertise. Throughout your 25 years of time with Long Meadow Schools, you've been a cornerstone in central office, and our schools are better because of the service and support that you have given. So when Diane told us that she was retiring, she did a little bit of math, and I think that that math is a real testament to the steady presence that she has provided for Long Meadow Public Schools over the years. In her 25 years, Diane has worked with five superintendents, five business managers/assistant superintendents, six directors of curriculum/assistant superintendents, seven directors of technology, four directors of people services and special education, one director of student and family support, 24 principals, seven facilities directors, and 45 different school committee members. She's also been here to welcome 25 years' worth of new kindergarten students, and has survived renovations, new buildings, new policies, and plenty of new technology, some probably more helpful than others. And through it all, she's been the keeper of so many moving pieces, ensuring that everything ran smoothly every day, and day-to-day and year-to-year. On a personal note, I have really enjoyed the opportunity to work with you over the last five years. You've been the go-to person for so many questions along the way, and, oh my goodness, I have asked a lot of questions. So many questions I've questioned her with, and every time, she has patience and grace and helps me figure out answers, and just, I've never stumped her, so that's really impressive in my mind. Your advice over the last few years has been invaluable. Thank you so much. On behalf of all of us, thank you for everything that you've done for Long Meadow Public Schools over the years, welcoming new students and families, to keeping so much of this little corner of the world moving forward orderly and making progress. We all wish you a long and healthy retirement, full of joy and fun-filled adventures with your beautiful family. Thank you so much. We have a plaque to recognize Diane. Honoring 30 Years of Excellence. Presented to Diane in recognition of the outstanding dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the town of Long Meadow.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Yep. Thank you. And rumor has it that I'm not the only one who is here tonight to celebrate Diane. So, we would love to welcome anyone else who would love to come up. Come on up. There's chair, yep.
Diane, why don't you come up? Thank you. Yeah.
Of course. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Diane, we are here, I was from the House and the Senate, to celebrate and to thank you. Personally, just thank you for everything you've done. You're all-in on Long Meadow. I know you've got 30 years working for the town overall. Got your bachelor's at Bay Path. You stayed all Long Meadow.
I did.
You get your coffee at Starbucks?
I did. I'm a Dunkin'.
Or the Dunkin'.
I'm a Dunkin'.
But, um, thank you so much. It's difficult these days to find commitment in any field, to stay here for so long and to put everything into it. And obviously, you know, anytime your name is mentioned, people really appreciate, and you see them smiling. And to have your husband, your son, and your grandchildren. My grandson already told me he was gonna run against me. Somebody's got a perfect face.
Make sure you take out papers for rep and not senate.
But, um, we are thrilled for you. Hopefully you have some great plans for retirement. I haven't heard, apparently the lips are sealed on that.
No.
But, um, to make it official, from the House, I'd like to read off the citation for you.
Thank you.
Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Diane Draganthis.
Yes.
Diane G. In recognition of your 30 years of dedication, commitment to the Long Meadow Public Schools, and for your invaluable organization, communication, and efficiency, the entire membership extends its very best wishes, the hope for future good fortune, continued success in all your endeavors, especially spending time with your beautiful family. Signed by the Speaker of the House and by being your state rep. And I'm so happy for you and thankful for everything you've given to the community.
Thank you so much.
I love how the glasses go off on Diane.
It's a town.
Oh, yeah. I'd leave the senator have something similar.
Diane, having spent 12 years as a school committee member in Lovlo, my favorite interactions were not with our superintendents, our other top school committee members. It was always the administrative assistant to the school committee and the superintendent. I had two while I was on my 12 years there. I still, um, sometimes run into them, Annie Phillips and Sue Santos.
Yep.
They were just wonderful. They kept everything in order for the committee. They were their go-to people for everything, and even when you had transitions in superintendents, that steady hand of having somebody right there who knows the system is invaluable. I know it to Marty, I know it to the committee members. So, just thank you for your service. On behalf of the Massachusetts Senate, I just want to thank you, and as a recovering school committee member, thank you for guiding us along the way. And congratulations to the two new school committee members, both Kate and Emily, who are here today for their first meeting. It's exciting. Unfortunately, they won't get the privilege of having you guiding the way.
For one month.
For one month.
One month.
But truly is, enjoy your retirement. My dad just retired from the Lovlo Public Schools after several decades, too.
Congratulations.
The service for it, and you know, my mom is a little skittish about having him home all the time. And I'm sure your husband is.
Is he retired as well?
He is.
Oh, no. I'm sorry for that. My mom doesn't know what to do with having my dad around all the time now. But congratulations to you for so many decades of just giving back to the community. It's always something that is the first line of defense when you come into the school department, having somebody there who understands and is also welcoming to people is such a big part of the community. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Massachusetts Senate, be hereby known and extends our congratulations to you, Diane of Long Meadow, I'm sorry, I slept this at Long Meadow. Long Meadow Public Schools, in recognition of your dedicated and committed years of service to the Long Meadow Schools, learning community, on the occasion of your well-earned retirement, and with gratitude. And be further known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its very best wishes for continued success. That this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and a copy of transmitted to our Clerk of the Senate and signed by me, your State Senator.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. And I think with all the committee members, too, come on in, and Marty's.
We can hold these.
I'll put my glasses down now.
Yeah. Just for the glaze. Nothing about standing.
Beautiful plaque, that.
Oh, yeah.
Over there.
Oh, it's over there. Bring it, bring that.
Bring it all. Let's get a laptop up here.
Well, I'll hold this. You take the fancy one, and you can do that.
Thank you so much.
I want it noted, uh, the quality, the granite quality.
That is very nice.
It's a brass versus snow.
Because it was much more gender balanced than last time. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Sorry to. Thank you for the presentation.
That was so great.
Appreciate it.
You too.
Thank you.
So Diane, I know I'm not the only committee member you have shepherded along the way and been there to offer so much information and warm support for, so I'll just give a moment if there's anybody else who wanted to say anything from the committee before we head into the next part of our meeting. Hope he folks are honest with us. Oh, there you go. I can't see who's trying to go first, so sorry. Can just dive in. Hopefully we did not lose them. All right. We also have a card that has some well-written notes in it, so I'll let those speak for themselves. But thank you so much on behalf of all of us. We really appreciate that. All right. On that note, we'll turn over to Dr. O'Shea.
If I may, um, I, you know, on behalf of the dozens and dozens of administrators that you've so capably served over the years, we also want to wish you well in your retirement. We had a gathering for Diane not too long ago, and her great family was there in force, and so many members of the LPS community turned out with a couple of former, a couple of my predecessors, Jan Hart Marie Doyle came to honor Diane as well, and it was a testament to just how much support and care she's provided to the superintendent's office over the years. Had the opportunity to ask some of the administrators to share some of their thoughts, and just, I wouldn't have time to read everything that they, that they mentioned, but commenting that Diane has been a beacon of support, calming presence, wisdom, generosity was noted, quiet strength and dedication, professionalism, attention to detail, a wealth of knowledge. All of these things sort of really reflective of Diane's character professionally and personally. I think what I heard over and over from the administrators when I asked them to share some thoughts was Diane's level of integrity, and, you know, I always valued that as superintendent. The confidence, the trust, the confidentiality that we shared is so important to the relationship between a superintendent and his or her assistant, and so I'm always, always grateful for that. But, um, one of our members of the admin team that noted that she, I want to make sure I quote this properly, wears more hats than a doted grandmother packing for a week-long cruise. She's GG by name, DG to many of us, but CEO of Fun and Function. Diane was the one that would rally the office, the central office staff for holiday parties, end-of-year parties, and always brought a lot of cheer and fun to, to the office culture. So, we're grateful, and we're going to miss Diane, and she has been so gracious in supporting and welcoming her successor, Tammy Welcome, who is here for her first school committee meeting officially. So, we welcome, as we, as we wish farewell to Diane, we welcome Tammy, but Diane has earned a long, healthy retirement with her amazing family. So, thank you, Diane, for everything you've done for me personally and professionally, and for all of our administrative team. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say it's been a privilege. It really has. It was a very unexpected career. Never planned it, never thought I'd ever be an admin assistant, just kind of fell into the role, and it took off, and I've, I've loved every minute. I really have. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll turn back over to you for some reorganization.
So, we are, um, here tonight to reorganize the school committee and to welcome our newest members, Emily Hansen and Kate Bean. So, welcome to your first meeting, and congratulations on your election to the school committee. And so, one of my formal, um, opportunities is to at least launch the reorganization of the school committee. And so, at this point, I would entertain a motion for the position of Chair. We're going to entertain motions for the position of School Committee Chair, School Committee Vice Chair, and School Committee Clerk. And so, to begin, I would entertain a motion for the position of Chair of the Long Meadow School Committee. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I would. I move that the school committee appoint Michaela Fitzgerald as Chair of the School Committee for the 25, '26 year.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
House.
We have a second from Kate, and so, um, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will lead a roll call vote. Emily?
Yeah.
Michaela?
I'm staying from voting.
I'm staying. Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Jamie's a yes. Adam?
Yay.
Adam is a yes. With that, we have a new Chair of the Long Meadow School Committee. Congratulations, Michaela Fitzgerald.
Okay, so now I'm gonna entertain a motion to appoint the Vice Chair of the School Committee.
I nominate Nicole Chenier as the Vice Chair of the School Committee.
We have a recommended motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion, so we'll vote. Jamie?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Kate?
Yay.
Nicole?
I'm staying.
Emily?
Yes.
And a yes for me, too. And next, we have, um, a motion. If anyone wants to recommend somebody to be the Clerk of the School Committee?
I move that the School Committee appoint Kate Bean as Clerk for the School Committee in the 25, '26 year.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
There we go. Two seconds. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, we'll vote. Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kate?
I'm staying.
Nicole?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And a yes for me, too. So, now we're gonna move on. We don't have any correspondence, so next on our agenda is our approval of minutes, and I entertain a motion. There's two motions.
I move that the School Committee approve the minutes of the May 27th, 2025 School Committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So, we'll vote. Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And a yes for me, too. We have one more recommended motion under approval of minutes.
I move that the School Committee approve the minutes to the June 2nd, 2025 School Committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And a yes for me, too. So, next on our agenda is public speak. Do we have anyone here tonight that is from the public that would like to speak to the School Committee? You can come right up to the microphone and introduce yourself and speak.
Hi. My name is Sylvia Scott, and I live on 25 Chatham Road in Long Meadow.
And you can go ahead and just get right into it, whatever you want to share with us.
Okay. So, this is specifically outlining a little bit of the technology program in the elementary schools, specifically Blueberry Hill, which is where I work, and just giving a quick overview. So, I'm gonna just read this. "Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm excited to share how our elementary technology curriculum not only supports authentic learning, but also helps students build the skills to succeed in middle school and beyond. At Blueberry Hill, technology is designed to benefit all learners. The technology special provides students with hands-on learning experiences. This project-based approach aligns with academic standards while also fostering social-emotional growth. Our curriculum focuses on four key areas: classroom integration, digital wellness, digital literacy/computer science, and STEM/engineering. I'd like to briefly highlight each. The first aspect is classroom integration, which supports classroom curriculum. Students create stop-motion movies of the butterfly lifecycle, build virtual field trips of landforms, or create a presentation in Canva about animals' physical and behavioral adaptations. These projects strengthen content understanding and collaboration skills. Another aspect we teach is digital wellness and safety, now more essential than ever. Using the Common Sense Media Curriculum, students learn to be safe, respectful, and responsible digital citizens. Topics include online privacy, kindness in digital communication, and balancing screen time, lessons that foster sound decision-making. In digital literacy and computer science, students begin coding as early as kindergarten, from programming areas, I'm sorry, programming games, to creating digital art with robots." And I have a couple examples here. This was made by fourth graders using robots, digital art. "Students gain fluency in multiple coding environments. These activities nurture perseverance, creativity, and a growth mindset, and it's fun. Recently, our after-school coding workshop was filled to capacity and included former students and parent volunteers, truly a testament to the excitement that coding brings. Unique to Blueberry Hill, each student receives 10 blocks of STEM-focused enrichment programming throughout the year. In enrichment, students are empowered to think like engineers and innovators. Through challenges that are centered on empathetic design, students work with various materials and experience trial and error and celebrate creative problem-solving. Projects include creating, designing a safety harness for a blind dog, and a candy dispenser that could work in space. Our emphasis on empathetic, human-centered engineering is perhaps best demonstrated by one of my favorite fourth-grade projects. The unit begins with an investigation into the Boston Molasses Flood of 1919. Students study primary sources like photographs and maps to understand the societal impact of an explosion of an overfilled molasses tank. We bring history to life through role-play, 3D modeling, and even taste-test molasses. We then create, sorry, we then compare the design decisions that led to that disaster with modern engineering practices, which focuses on the needs of the people they designed for. The culminating project is to design a chair. Students choose from fictional case studies, an elderly man with back pain, a remote learner who is disorganized, or a teenage gamer who needs a reminder when it's time for dinner. As a team, they build a representational model of how they can engineer a solution to their needs." So, I brought one. So, this is one that was made, and they have, it's a representation. So, there's a cat toy for the cat that is always relaxing. They designed the chair to be low to the ground. There's a remote control, and some organizational tools, and a backrest. So, they start with a piece of foam board and some cutting tools and hot glue guns, and they create something like this, and they paint it and decorate it. So, I just wanted to give you a little show of what it looks like. So, in conclusion, technology at Blueberry Hill is not merely about preparing students for the future, it's about helping them become thoughtful, capable, and compassionate people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott.
Thank you.
Does any school committee members have any questions or comments they want to hear towards Mrs. Scott before she goes, or? It's not necessary, I just wanted to give the choice. Right. Thank you.
Could I just quickly note, so later on in the agenda, we will be addressing the elementary technology offering, and I think so much of what the committee will hear about is sort of reflective of many of the approaches that Sylvia described in her program at Blueberry. So, it's good background for the committee for your discussion later on, so, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is this, was this a pilot program at Blueberry? Do all the elementary schools participate?
This, um, this is the existing program at Blueberry that Sylvia is describing. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you. Congratulations to your appointments, too.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have business with guests. Do we not have any business with guests? No business with guests. So, we're moving on to school committee announcements and recognitions. So, I'm gonna start with my first chair report. Don't worry, it's not that long. I promise. First, I just wanted to say, um, thank you for the nomination and the votes to serve as the Chair for the School Committee this year. It's an honor to take on this role, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. I've truly enjoyed working with school committee members, past and present, as a team, guided by our shared goals, policies, and values, to support continued progress and achievement within our educational system. It is working together with each other, the school staff and the community, that helps us create a positive and efficient culture and provide the best outcomes for all students. Congratulations to all the students, teachers, and staff on the successful completion of the 2024-2025 school year. A heartfelt thank you to all the families, caretakers, grandparents, and community members who showed up for field days, class parties, and graduations, and performances. Your presence and participation are what make the end of the year really special, special and memorable for the students. A special shout-out to the Long Meadow High School Class of 2025 on your final school year in the district. We are so proud of your accomplishments and look forward to your continued success as you take on your next steps and become true visions of graduates outside of your Long Meadow education and out in the world. Good luck to every one of you. I want to recognize the Long Meadow High School Girls Tennis Team on an incredible achievement, securing their second consecutive state championship. They completed two undefeated seasons, winning 46 consecutive matches. I've seen the coaches and the team working tirelessly on the courts, on hot afternoons, pushing themselves to greatness, and clearly the hard work paid off. Congrats to all the players, coaches, families, the athletic department, the teachers, and the Booster Club. It takes support, determination, grit, and heart to achieve that level of excellence. A big shout-out to all the staff still working hard to close out the school year and prepare the schools for a successful year ahead. Your efforts do not go unnoticed. It takes a lot of work to go from one school year to the next. And finally, just looking ahead, I just want to make sure everybody's aware of some upcoming dates for the fall that are important for our middle school projects. So, there's the special town meeting on September 9th, and then the special town election on September 38th. And that's it for me. Other committee member announcements and recognitions. Does any other committee member have any announcements or recognitions that they'd like to present? All right. So, then we'll move on to other reports. So, we have the Superintendent Report.
Just briefly, I think Michaela said it well, winding down the 24-25 school year and simultaneously prepping for the, for the coming school year. We are preparing our extended summer year programming to begin in early July, summer enrichment programming. The preschool will be underway, summer preschool, or the summer special education programming will be at Blueberry Hill this year. Also, recognize our 20, Class of 2025. It was a classy, great graduation that recognized an outstanding class. And also, a shout-out, too, to the Girls Tennis Team. That was quite an accomplishment to win two state championships in a row is a rare achievement. So, very proud of that team and Coach Fram as well. So, thank you.
All right. So, we have additional reports. LBEC? No, not, oop, my goodness, sorry. CBS calling me in. There's no report for SEAL, we're closed for the year, but definitely keep your eye out for the date for the meet and greet. That will be our first kickoff meeting in the fall, right at the beginning of school. It's such a great event. It's a good time to meet many administrators, principals of com, and families. I always see families connecting there, kids making friends, and it's a great event. Energy and sustainability is also no report, and we also have no student representative report, but Ms. Danica Shea is the new student representative, and she will begin in the fall. So, we're gonna move on to subcommittee reports. There's no report for the Finance Subcommittee and for the Policy Subcommittee. Policies are posted for public comment. Policies JJEF Student Activity Accounts continues to be posted to the district website to solicit public input. And then we have the Curriculum Subcommittee. We met on Monday, June 9th, and we discussed, um, the changes to the Center School We met on Monday, June 9th, and we discussed the changes to the Center School Technology Integration Program, where they're going to pilot a new course called Exploration Studio. And so we learned about how the alignment to social-emotional learning and the CKLA curriculum, which goes in-depth to many science as well as history topics, and how we can create improvements to our already great program to kind of align and also bring it kind of forward, because it is an ever-evolving area of education in elementary school.
So tonight, here to present is Dr. Beth Nelson, our curriculum director. Beth spent some time with curriculum sub discussing some of the proposed changes to the technology offering at the elementary school, and if you give me one second, I'll pull up a slide deck, and Beth will take us through that. There's also some detailed documents that have been in your packet, so certainly we can answer any questions you have about the slides or about the detailed information that is in your packet, so just give me.
Emily, nice to meet you. But Emily, nice to see you again. Met briefly the other day. So currently, just to give background to some of the committee members who are brand-new, currently in the elementary programming, we have our students go to a 45-minute special subject class once a day for 45 minutes. On one day of the week, they go for a second related arts class. So traditionally, we've had music, art, physical education, and library media as our related arts classes. About five years, no, sorry, 10, 12 years ago, we added a technology integration class to be responsive to the fact that technology was all of a sudden everywhere. So that was response to our students' need, response to our teachers' needs, and at that time, it also gave our teachers in the elementary level a common planning time. So once a week, they were able to meet as a collaborative grade-level team by getting a second special, their class had a second special one day of the five-day rotation. So what we're going to learn about, hear about today is building off the wonderful things Mrs. Scott shared with us today that they're doing at Blueberry Hill Elementary School. So she has had, the principal there, has uniquely been able to schedule every classroom for 10 additional tech blocks during the school year, where they're getting an enriched experience through STEAM and STEM experiences. So those were the projects that she was showing today. We want to take that knowledge and preserve those really special projects that are already happening and really powerful, and build upon that with all of the other competing needs that our students are asking for and in need of in our classrooms today. So with that, tonight's presentation will give you a very quick glimpse, an overview of how we're hoping to enhance our current technology offerings to include working towards the vision of the graduate, social-emotional learning that's deeply rooted in our Yale Ruler, which is already our SEL curriculum and programming that we're using at the elementary through grades eight level. It is tied to end-of-year projects that follow one of the domains at each grade level for our CKLA, which is our literacy. So it's really taking a lot of what's already happening, but trying to bring it together in one place. So we see this, the hands-on learning through STEAM, as a really great opportunity to teach students that the future-ready skills they need. The competencies in our vision of the graduate are those critical skills that we want everyone to gain as they move through preschool through grade 12 here in Long Meadow Public Schools. And then the Yale Ruler is the SEL programming that we're using already here in the district. But this, by having it in this course, we're going to be much more intentional about being able to follow some of those lessons and really deliver them in an effective and meaningful way that will tie in with some of these hands-on projects. So as I shared earlier, this will be a weekly K-5 special subject class, so every classroom will go to this Exploration Studio once a week for a 45-minute period, where they will focus on SEL, STEAM, vision of the graduate, and it will be inquiry-based and project-based learning. So a lot of hands-on, a lot of collaborative work with partners, but also just some tinkering. They're going to have the opportunity to really try to learn and figure things out for themselves, use those critical thinking skills. So in this classroom, it's our goal that students become explorers. They explore the world around them through the curriculum that's in front of them. So essentially, what we're hoping to build is scaffolding from basic emotional literacy skills up to really intense leadership projects, so that by the time they're finishing fifth grade, they are presenting really robust capstone projects that will lend itself very nicely for heading off into the middle school. It will align really well with our STEAM programming that we have at the middle school, and then tie in with our capstone projects that we're offering at Long Meadow High School. So up here, you have a sample of just what a kindergarten, we kind of tried to break the year up into three themes. So in kindergarten, the beginning of the year, they'll be working on an introduction to SEL and just the routine for the classroom. As the year progresses, working together and playing together. Those are really important kindergarten skills, but we'll be making sure that within that, there's a real focus to the SEL units, and what's hyperlinked there that you were not clicking to today are actual lessons on building relationships that are approved and already in use in our schools. And then, as the year goes on, exploring ideas and sharing ideas. So what a kindergarten capstone project is going to look a lot different than fifth graders, but at least getting them to a place where they might be excited about showing something, maybe it's through storytelling. But by the end of the year, they have something to show, and they're really proud for their work. The CKLA theme for kindergarten, so Taking Care of the Earth is one of their big standards or one of the big units in kindergarten. So wouldn't it be great if that storytelling that they're doing lends itself back to the CKLA unit, and that would be our goal through the kindergarten. As you get to the fifth grade, as I said, so they'll engage in a full compass capstone project, where they'll go from the idea phase to the planning, to the execution, to an actual showcase. And like I said before, it'll hopefully build itself really beautifully into our middle school STEM programming, STEAM programming, and our high school capstone. I think it's important that we think about what a classroom like this might look like, and I think we envision it with, you know, space for a makerspace innovation area, certainly some desk space or table space that people can work collaboratively. We envision it with like whiteboards on the wall, so that they're planning and erasing and rethinking and engineering things. They'll certainly have SEL tools. We have coding kits at all of our elementary schools already. We want to maintain that, we want to have access to that. We have tinkering building sets, both at the middle school and at the elementary schools, that came through some LEAF grants several years back. We want to maintain that and give students access to those sets, and then certainly a calm, inclusive, creative space. I know a question that's come up often is how will we measure the success of Exploration Studio? And I think we already have some measures in place. We do have student surveys that we already do, but they can be more intentional with how has this course or how has this experience helped improve or shape some of these SEL skills? And that's all kept in panorama right now, that data and information, so we'll be able to look at that. We'll certainly have the opportunity to look at their social-emotional development on the mood meter, which is a function of Yale Ruler, where students learn to assess their own mood and their own emotional intelligence against the mood meter. Student engagement, so we want to hear from the students. What do they like about the course? What would they change? We can't always change everything that the students want, but at least we can hear from them and maybe make revisions or twists. Student-led demonstration, so those would be those capstone projects at the end of the year. And then, of course, we want to hear from the classroom teachers about how is the knowledge and the information from this once-weekly experience transferring into your classroom? Is it enriching your conversations when you are doing a CKLA unit, or when you're doing morning meeting and working on some of the SEL standards? Or can we enhance that a little bit more? Can we be more specific and explicit with the instruction? And then, of course, family input. So, you know, we have family input through many channels, school council, PTOs and PTOs, principals, every couple of years, put out a survey to the community about what's going well and what needs improvement. So we have some existing channels in place to make sure that we're gathering that feedback. And then, just observational data. Are all kids engaged in this learning? Are they enjoying the hands-on opportunities? Are we seeing students who, you know, maybe their traditional style of learning is difficult for them, but they're just excelling, because now they're using their hands and they're using their learning in a different way? So next steps would certainly be gathering feedback from staff. I want to lean into our existing staff that have been teaching technology and digital media and digital literacy skills. We want to learn from them and preserve that special part of their programming. We want to lean into classroom teachers to find out what's going to be really important for them in this space. How can we help their curriculum advance through the opportunity to align that with this class? And then, hopefully, hire a teacher for Center School and support that teacher throughout the summer to make sure that we have a really great program to begin in August. So we're really proud of this work, the people that we have shared these ideas with. You know, I did send out an email to the Blueberry, Wolf Swamp, and Center School staffs last week after I met with curriculum sub, sharing the plan, and we received some really exciting feedback. They're excited about the opportunity to tie everything together, and we're excited for what's ahead. And I think, you know, I sat here maybe a little over a year ago, speaking to you all about another big change, and I know change is hard and the unknown can be scary, but I think as the year progressed, even those who are worried and afraid of the changes of our new literacy program have just fully embraced it and adopted it, and they're excited about the growth that our students showed from September through June. So I hope that we have that same outcome with Exploration Studio. Any questions?
Can I underscore a couple of things? So the idea would be to launch this as a pilot next year at Center School with the expectation that it would be rolled out at Blueberry and Wolf Swamp in the succeeding years. It'll give us an opportunity to really gather some additional feedback and staff input over the course of the year and really get this in an even better place for the 26-27 school year. I was thinking about how this class is really, in so many ways, a culmination of some of the directions that have been an important part of school committee conversations over the years, and that is trying to find opportunities for kids to be really deeply immersed in their learning, to own their learning, finding opportunities for students to create, to collaborate. This is what we've been talking about for so long, so that really comes together with this class. The other thing, later on in your agenda, we're having an opportunity to thank LEAF, the Long Meadow Educational Excellence Foundation, for contributing to teacher grants. And when I think about the teacher grants over the years, it feels like many of them planted seeds that are, you know, kind of blossoming with this class. When we think about coding kits and circuit kits and robotic sets and things like that, like, we're really grateful to LEAF for providing an impetus for so many, you know, a lot of the equipment and furniture that we hope will kind of surface in this class as well. So thank you, Beth, for her leadership. It was a collaborative effort, but we're really at the beginning of the road in terms of, you know, we've been very thoughtful and purposeful about designing the class, and Beth has built it out in great detail, but we know that there's a lot in front of us in terms of engaging the staff and students and families to make sure that this is the best course it can possibly be for our elementary students. So thank you to Beth, principals, our tech teachers who provided some critical input there as well. Definitely open to your thoughts and questions.
Nicole?
I was wondering if you could just talk to us a little bit more about, I know you talked about this a little bit at curriculum subcommittee, but for everyone else too, about sort of some of the intentionality of collaboration that might be available. I know this would be a newer position at Center School and as a pilot. What kind of support that person might have and what kind of collaboration they would be able to have to ensure that as we move forward into future years, the current technology teachers are able to bring in the work that they've done over the years and make sure that this is a well-supported and sustainable program?
So I think, once the new teacher is hired, we'd love to begin the initiation and the opportunity for those conversations to take place. I also think it's really going to be important for them to lean into our middle school STEAM teachers as well, so that we align and make sure that we're not doing projects that are happening in the middle school, or that we're building on, we're maybe perhaps building projects that can be expanded on in middle school. I think it's really important that there's conversation with classroom teachers. It's important that there's conversations with our library media specialists and what standards are going to be preserved in that space to make sure that we're really being intentional about how best to address the many, many different things that we need to, that we're responsible for, sharing with students on an annual basis. In terms of what does that look like? So we will have some dedicated vertical planning times next year, and that's where I see possibly some of those middle school STEAM teacher conversations, but also opportunities to meet with the library media specialist and the current technology integration specialist who are still existing at Center, I'm sorry, at Blueberry and Wolf Swamp. So I think we want to, we have dedicated time already in the calendar built in for that to happen, but I also believe all the principals will be supportive of providing release time or substitute coverage if there's a need for a conversation that needs to take place more urgently or some planning to take place, that we can make sure that there's a space for that.
Okay. Any other questions?
I know it's a pilot program, but is there a hope that by the end of the year, there's sort of a working curriculum that all three schools would use that are unified around?
Yes.
Or, okay.
We would want to make sure that it's fully aligned, so that those special projects are happening at all three, at all three schools. So certainly, every individual teacher can put their own spin and flair on how that curriculum is delivered, but we want to make sure that there's a similar experience regardless of what school you're in.
Perfect. And I know the mass frameworks, the STE frameworks you highlighted in here in pink, some of what those were, and it looks like there's a good blend of both the SEL castle competencies and those science ones. It feels kind of, I mean, I guess we'll find out over the course of the pilot program if it will feel like there's room to fit.
Everything.
The current, yes, exactly. The current STE frameworks for each grade while also accommodating some more space for the Yale Ruler, which is exciting to see more opportunities for that to grow in the district as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, so I think there'll be a lot of revision, reflection, conversations, and tweaking as we learn, you know, that's the best thing about having a pilot. You learn what works and you just refine and improve.
Yep. Great.
Thank you.
I have a question. So I know currently, because I just had two students in first grade, they learned through their tech integration class everything that they needed to know about using a Chromebook, and that was something that they didn't have the skill set for. They were used to kind of more of like an iPad or a phone. And so I'm just, I want to just make it, I'm understanding that that's going to be now something that's taught to them in library, so that this can take place.
Correct.
And so the digital literacy skills will be more geared in the library class.
Library media, correct.
And this will be more of the time where they can apply and we can find alignment to the other programming.
Yes. So, and then, of course, just by the nature of that we're using computers in classrooms, the classroom teacher has a responsibility in that as well, and they are working on that digital citizenship every time they're opening their Chromebooks and reminding them, you know, appropriate use of technology and appropriate and safe use of the internet and being online. So it's kind of infused in everything we do now, just by the nature of where we are in the 21st century. But we do have, you know, the teaching digital citizenship in pre-K-12, and we would want to make sure that we're honoring this work and that this work doesn't leave us. So we certainly see that, a space for that.
Yeah, and I mean, I think this is what, as an example of it, is that it is ever-evolving work, you know? It's always changing, and the way we teach digital citizenship has to be like dynamic and flexible, and so does the way that we, you know, it's a great place for kids to have UDL. Do you feel that, so it's a lot of the SEL stuff getting tied into the kind of STEM/STEAM projects? Are you afraid that, like, I know there was a piece about inclusion, but I just want to make sure, like, that those opportunities, like the STEM and the STEAM enrichment, or if it's during specials, that it is a time where kids who have learning disabilities are honored in there as well? Like, maybe they have a harder time with collaboration than others, and we don't want to be, like, taking away from their work in learning STEAM and STEM by focusing a lot on that? Or is that something that will... Or is that something that will be?
Yeah. And so the way the elementary schedule works, students are included, that's one of the most inclusive spaces, is the related arts. But I think that, as I said earlier, I think sometimes these are the opportunities for students to shine the greatest. That might maybe a traditional math or ELA lesson is really a challenge, but you kind of remove that barrier when you can give them something in front of them and work with that. And we know that everybody's a little bit different, and everybody, their challenges are different, but we work with every student, and we want to make sure that every student's successful. So I see it as a great way to actually be more inclusive and to support their learning.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, then we have a recommended motion.
I move on the recommendation of the Curriculum Subcommittee that the school committee approved the curriculum for a new course entitled Exploration Studio.
You have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? Comments?
Looking forward to hearing it next year, roughly, probably a little earlier than this, May-ish, kind of how it all came together and what it looks like it'll be for the 26, 27 school year.
Be great, maybe we can have a capstone presentation.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I'm looking forward to it, too. I think, I looked at a bunch of different websites of school districts just to see, like, well, what are they doing? Like, what is it? And what I came up with was, everybody is doing something different right now, and like, the common pattern that I saw is it is ever-evolving, and kids need to learn about themselves and how the world works, and they have to learn from each other, and it's sort of lost on a lot of kids these days, especially post-COVID, so I'm excited for the opportunity to see how this pilot works out. I am, you know, curious about the measurements. I know it's hard to measure, but I think in the way that we split up the grades and the themes and the projects, maybe there's a way we can pre-assess and post-assess and do that, like, parallel to what's happening at the two other elementary schools, and really look at that to see, like, is this the best approach? Is there, because one other area is like nature and science, too. I know this is, like, it's a lot, but like, that's one other way that I think kids could be, like, learning more in nature with science, so I'm excited about, like, the maker stuff. I was reflecting today on 2019, when I, we did this, like, almost like a everybody stop and read, but it was everybody stop and STEAM, and I had to teach kids to put circuits into bananas so that they, then they, we learned how to play Mary Had a Little Lamb, and I remember how scary and nervous it was for me. I had no training as a teacher to teach this at all, but I think at the heart of every teacher, and same with, like, through CKLA, people are passionate to give the kids in front of them what they need, and, like, they were just all so happy and proud, and I saw kids that never got along working together because they were so excited to, like, hit the banana button. And I had practiced so many times the night before that no one in my house still wants banana bread. Any other comments or discussion? All right, then we will vote. Adam? Kate?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And a yes for me, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful summer, if I don't see you.
Thank you, too. Okay, we are on to ongoing business. Middle school building project update.
Sure. We last night had an opportunity to present to the Select Board on the status of the middle school project. Christian Witsett, the principal architect, one of the principals from JWA, our design team, and I presented to the Select Board, and we put together a slide deck, and I thought I'd take another opportunity since this also goes out to the wider community to provide an update on where we are with the middle school building project. So I will sort of move through this efficiently, if that's okay. We have, as it's known to the committee, Christian reiterated to the committee, the members of the school building committee, which we have to identify a new school committee member to take Julie Morgan's place, who has been on the building committee as a member of the school committee. Last night, Christian and I had an opportunity to talk to the Select Board about the proposed site plan. I know this has been a topic of conversation with the committee, but I thought it was worth reinforcing a few things. You'll see the lengthy driveway to take as much traffic off the street as possible. One of the things that is worth highlighting is, on Williams Street, as you're heading eastbound, you can see sort of, perhaps you might curse or faintly, heading down Williams Street, there is a proposed turn lane heading onto the campus, so we hope that that's another strategy to alleviate the potential congestion. I think the, I'll say again, that what we have here is a campus that is designed for traffic and busing and pedestrian traffic. Our current campus is not designed that way. Our current campus, the parking lot, the driveway, a through street, the bus lane and the drop-off lane are all combined, and really there is no, it's just one open space on the current Williams site. This breaks it out into, you know, distinct bus lanes, traffic lanes, parking, drop-off, et cetera. You can see that the site plan also incorporates a artificial turf field on the south side of the campus, and so I think it was widely felt that, given the amount of traffic and play that goes on on that Williams campus, that it was important to have a field that served, it was a multipurpose field that served students and athletes throughout all seasons. So the site plan, this information is posted to our website, and certainly if folks have any questions, we're happy to address those. We continue to be engaged with police, fire, DPW, Town Manager's Office on the site plan. As recently as a couple of weeks ago, we had a large meeting of all those folks and school and school officials as well, just to think through the traffic flow and think if any additional adjustments were needed. Good view of the elevations from different angles, again, familiar to this committee, I'd say, but looking for every opportunity to push this out to the wider community as we prepare for votes in September. Some interior sketches, we are only at the schematic design phase, but even at this stage, the renderings are fairly advanced, and you'll see the renderings here. A lot of wood surfaces that bring some warmth and color into the building that we think will add an attractive element. The general floor plan, you can see how the floors would stack. Each wing will house a team of students or teams of students. Right now, our schools are organized in 100-student teams. There's a 100-student team at sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. That will continue to be the case in the new school. And so though it's a larger school with a larger cohort of students, a greater enrollment, it is an opportunity for us to really ensure that kids have that small school feel and that they are still assigned to the 100-student teams. The administration, notice the counseling wing that's stacked on top of the administrative office. I think that's one of the things that stands out, is the SEL supports that will be incorporated into this building. It is a highly inclusive school, very excited for the spaces that we've set aside to serve students on IEPs. We think that it creates very inclusive opportunities for us. All of the classrooms will be larger than what we're typically used to, which in itself that creates opportunities for inclusion. Another look at the floor plan. I won't linger too much on the educational advantages. We discussed that at length here at this committee meeting, but, you know, certainly the opportunity to bring more students into the middle school, to expand academic programming, to expand elective programming is very, very powerful. And the spaces, the furniture, the fixtures, the equipment, the technology that will be available to kids, I think will really help us raise the bar for students at the middle level. We're very excited about that. On the, sort of, the south side of the building is an area that incorporates the arts, the performing and the fine arts, and incorporates some of the STEAM spaces, and we think that area of the building is going to be a focal point for the type of programming that Beth described earlier, which is built around students researching, designing, creating, presenting, like, all of those durable skills that we want students to get. I think this building is really going to help us advance and embed all of those critical durable skills. The overall schedule, again, familiar to most, September votes, we can't say that often enough, September 9th town meeting, September 30th will be a ballot vote. We would need success at both stages to advance the project. And then finally, these are our preliminary project costs while we are here at schematic design. I say that these are preliminary because it is tomorrow, big day tomorrow, June 18th, we will have an opportunity for our project to be formally considered by the MSBA board, and we anticipate that the board will approve the schematic design, they will approve the all, overall project scope and budget, and that will put us in a position to bring the project forward to the residents in September. Just quickly, on the project costs associated, you'll see that the overall total project budget at just over $151 million is almost exactly where we thought this project would land about a year ago. And two independent estimators have looked at the schematic design and looked at the plans, and really came within fractional numbers of each other in terms of supporting that estimated total project budget. So we feel really confident that that $151,594,000 total project budget is a good, firm, solid number for us to continue. The MSBA grant, we're estimating at $54.7 million, and it's worth sort of noting that we will receive, the MSBA reimbursement will be about 56% of eligible costs. So I'll repeat that, 56% of eligible costs. There are project costs that are eligible for reimbursement by the MSBA, and then there are project costs that are not deemed to be eligible by the MSBA. For example, the auditorium is not considered to be an eligible cost, but it's important to the music department, it's important to our educational program and plan, and so the building committee felt strongly that we should proceed with an auditorium as opposed to cafeteria or gymnasatorium. Is that the right word? But those are some of, that's an example of the types of costs that would be deemed ineligible by the MSBA. We're anticipating that the district share of the project would be $96.8 million. Worth underscoring that the design incorporates about $1.4 million of off-site improvements to alleviate, to mitigate the potential traffic and congestion issues. So that would include a proposed turning lane, an additional sidewalk on Williams, and then some enhanced signage and beacons and that kind of thing throughout the campus. So we feel, we feel confident that the overall project costs that we have identified, they've remained consistent for a long time now, and we feel confident going to the MSBA with these projected costs, and we feel confident that the MSBA is going to look favorably on this project tomorrow. So cross your fingers, we're anticipating an affirmative vote from the MSBA, and, you know, if that goes well, if we get the town votes in September, then we would proceed to full design and construction in the spring or summer of 2026 for an opening in the fall of 2028. So things were, in the May-June time period, as Nicole knows, as a member of our building committee, things were moving productively, I'd say, and now we're at that stage where we're going to wait and see what the MSBA says, and if we get the green light there and with the town, we'll roll into the advanced design phase. So we're excited for the opportunities. We're excited, we got a good reception from the Select Board last night. They appear to be firmly behind the project, and we are making our way to various town constituencies, including the Planning Board on July 2nd, just to give them an update. We don't need a special vote of the Planning Board just yet, but we do want to keep the Planning Board engaged, and that also goes for other town departments, police, fire, DPW, et cetera, et cetera. So we're really trying to do our diligence in terms of, you know, connecting with all the right stakeholders in the wider community. So appreciate the chance to update the committee and the wider community on where we are with the building project, and if you have any questions, happy to answer.
So being a newbie, I just have a few questions that you probably already covered in previous meetings, but, so I understand what you're saying is that there's going to be construction on Williams, or a new turning lane.
Yes.
So we're going to widen that road.
Correct.
Great. And then I just noticed in the notes, already answering one of my questions, that we're going to be able to have some economies of scale in our administrative staff.
Yeah, I think, I think I would probably link it back to, like, operational costs and really the efficiency that we'll gain. Right now, there's a lot of redundancy, right? We have, you know, teachers, administrators, custodians, food service personnel across both schools kind of doing some of the same work, and so there'll naturally either be some savings associated with operations, but I think we can spend our education dollars more wisely. I think we can, we can be more targeted, more efficient in the way we commit resources that really make a difference to kids in terms of teaching staff and programming, so.
So there will be some realignment in terms of the number of teachers that teach middle school in Long Meadow?
I think we have to sit down and sort of, I think one of the, yeah, we don't know for sure yet, but we have developed a really lengthy education plan that's kind of laid out what we, what we hope to see. I think we also, over the next three years, have to think about what additional offerings we can provide to students, and I think that will, some of that will drive the answer to the question that you're talking. So we really think that we can provide some additional elective opportunities for kids and, you know, so music educators, rather than kind of running back and forth between two schools, they can be more specialized in their practice. So it's not necessarily that you're trying to save on teaching staff, but you're able to commit their schedules, commit them more efficiently and more effectively for kids, I'd say.
And our class sizes will stay?
Yeah, I think actually it will help us with some class size issues. We, you know, Long Meadow's got a really firm commitment to really manageable, good class size, and so when you have larger cohorts of students, it really can divide those cohorts more evenly. We've had experiences in recent years where a particular grade level at one of the schools might spike to, you know, 115 kids, and so there's a question, you know, it's a little bit, maybe it's 120 kids, it's a little bit more than the existing staff can handle, and you have to add fractional amounts of English teachers or social studies teachers. But when you have larger cohorts of students, it really can divide them more efficiently across grade levels. So we, actually, I think it's going to, it's going to help us even out class size for all kids across, you know, all grades, so.
Wonderful. Sounds great.
It's exciting.
I think those were my questions.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you. Appreciate the chance.
Okay, so next on the agenda is the 2025-2026 school calendar revision.
All right. So let me, you have a recommended revision for the 25-26 school year calendar in your packet, and I'd ask you to, there's two recommendations in there. One is is the recommendation of the calendar committee, and one is the recommendation of the superintendent. And so before we get to that, I just want to explain in greater detail why we need to consider some revisions to the 25-26 school year calendar. So give me one second here. So it begins with a, and I'll share this for our members at home, and this document is in your packet. It begins with the changes to our parent-teacher conferences for the 25-26 school year. And so the conference schedule at the K-8 level and the 9-12 level will look slightly different based on the terms of our agreement with the Long Meadow Education Association. So we spent a lot of time thinking about how we can sort of bring conferences into the 21st century. We have a conference model that predates email, phones in classrooms, Zoom communication, all of the tools that are available to parents, caregivers, and our staff. And so next year, we have developed a new conference schedule that will, one of the prime features of this, it will take one full day will be dedicated to parent-teacher conferences from 8:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon. And so that's going to create a nice chunk of time for our educators and for our parents to, to have those conferences. I'd also say, as, as we look at the conference schedule, our educators, I would say, are really good about being responsive to requests for phone calls, emails, meetings, quick Zooms. And so this is sort of reflective of that. We find that, you know, the, the conference schedule can be a little bit more flexible. So the, the total amount of hours that we're anticipating next year will be the same number of hours in total that we've had in the past. But we would transition from fewer half-days for conferences. We had four half-days for parent-teacher conferences, which was really kind of unusually, it was an unusually high amount when compared to peer districts. So it'll transition us from some of those frequent half-days to the full day of conferences that I mentioned. And we would still retain a couple of, we would still retain one of the evening conferences as well. The other thing that will happen is that this will more than double the amount of time that's available for high school conferences. We had heard that our high school parents and caregivers were having a hard time accessing the limited amount of time that we had set aside. And it was sort of like speed dating, quick, you know, five, literally five-minute conferences. So we've, we've expanded the amount of conference time available to parents and caregivers of high school students. So I know we've talked about this, but the reason for the adjustment to the 25-26 calendar is tied to the new conference schedule that we'll be sure to explain to parents in greater detail. So for your consideration, is a calendar that really is the same, for all practical purposes. It matches the calendar that had previously been approved by the school committee. In other words, the committee, the, the calendar has the same start date, end date, vacation dates. All of those key cornerstones of the calendar have not changed. What has changed is the assignment of some of the conferences. So calendar committee came together, we developed a set of recommendations for the school committee to consider. Subsequent to that, there was one adjustment that I wanted to bring to the committee. Only difference between the calendar that the calendar committee put together and the administrative recommendation that I'm offering is the placement of the high school conference. It would move the high school conference evening from the second half of the year to the first half of the year where it has always been. So there's a lot of, a lot of detail in here. I guess I would say the key dates for parents have been in place for a while now. They've known first day, last day, vacation days. Those are the things that people plan around. But for your consideration, my recommendation to you is to, is the 25-26 school year calendar that is noted as the administrative recommendation of the superintendent. Happy to answer any questions about it or explain further the parent-teacher conference schedule.
Anyone have any questions? If not, we could entertain a motion.
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee approved the 25-26 school calendar as presented and dated June 2nd, 2025, superintendent's version.
It's June 12th, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, June 12th, 2025. Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any comments or discussion?
Thank you to the calendar committee for working on that again. If I'm correct, also your recommended change has also been discussed with LEA, founder committee.
Yes, I did circle back, thank you. I did circle back with the calendar committee. They're sort of friendly to the adjustment that I put in front of you tonight. So I appreciate the chance to, to mention that. Thanks, yeah.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move to a vote. Adam? Kate?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And yes for me, too. So next up, we have our school committee meeting schedule, where we'll plan out our summer meetings. And this has all the meetings on here that we'll have all year. So just mark them with your calendar. They're mostly all Tuesdays, but there's some, it says when they're a Monday because of holidays or the town meeting. And then same in May, there's a Thursday meeting because of the town meeting, a Monday meeting in November because of Veterans Day. But those are all the meetings. Or does anyone have any, like, were the summer meetings put out there? Like, any problems with them? I'll most likely be remote for all of them. Am I trying my best to make it for the August 19th one?
We have August 5th, and, and August 19th is something that Nicole and I had discussed. It's, it's possible that there won't be any pressing business for the August 5th meeting. More likely, there will be some items for us to, to talk about on the 19th. But it's good to, it's easier to cancel a meeting than to try to place one in the fly.
Yeah, so mark those for the summer.
Do those all work?
If no one has any problems with them. I know we're missing some, well, those are when the meetings are going to be.
Snooze, you lose.
Yeah, you snooze, you lose.
And for our new members, we will, as the dates approach, or maybe even well in advance, we'll send out meeting invites so that you can kind of just easily plug it into your calendar. So we'll get that, we'll get that information off to you.
That's just an informative part of our agenda, no votes. We're going to move on to the 25 grants and special revenues revisions.
Good evening.
Yeah, you're here.
Tonight in your packet is a request for the school committee to consider a revision to our FY '25 budget, specifically of some, some grants that we either have currently in our budget or recognizing to new grants that we received later this school year. So I'll quickly just review them. The Medco grant is just realigning the allocation of the budget to reflect where we anticipate the final spending for FY '25 to be. Same with the Credit for Life grant. Again, it's just, it's recognizing that as a new grant, sorry, for $6,400. It's supported a program at the high school for juniors, bringing in an opportunity for students to experience some real-life challenges with budget and loans and groceries and having to go through this experience of living based on a profession and a salary you get, and trying to manage your budget based on expenses. So it was trying to bring some real-life opportunity experiences to the, I think they were juniors, which were junior class.
Credit for Life.
Is it Scholastic?
I don't think so, yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember who.
That's the author of the program.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's the, it might be a local Chamber of Commerce or a local bank that sponsors it, yeah.
So that helped pay to bring in the entity and the materials for the students to participate in this activity and probably give us the basis for offering it every year. A new special ed IEP grant to help with the implementation of the state's new IEP that started up this year. So there's $15,000 that will be recognized through this budget revision. And then the last one is the Cooler Communities Grant, which again, was already in the budget, but just revising the distribution in the lines. This grant supported Center School. They were involved in the Earth Day program down on the Green, I think back in May, early June, at a booth, and encouraging composting and recycling throughout the community. So the total revision would add $26,400 to our total budget for FY '25.
Great. Any comments or questions about the revisions to the revenues?
I move that the school committee approve the FY '25 Grants and Special Revenues revisions, number four, dated June 10th, 2025, as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move into a vote. Adam?
Yay.
Kate?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And a yes for me, too. So now we're moving into the building use requests, which I believe have already been recommended by the finance subcommittee. It's a consent agenda. So there's no discussion on items on a consent agenda. So if any committee member would like to discuss one or more of the items on the agenda discussed, the committee will have to vote to remove the item from the consent agenda. So does anybody have any of the items in the consent agenda that they want to discuss for building use?
Give a quick overview if you want.
Yeah.
So there are three requests. One is from the Long Meadow Park and Rec Department, the Youth Football Association, for use of the high school, the multipurpose room back here next to our back gym, for a football or weightlifting program for all students in grade seven through 12, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays, and Fridays, starting on June 23rd, running through August 8th. The second request is from the Youth Football Association, which would be for the high school fields, for trainings on Monday, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Sundays, starting on July 20th, running through August 7th. And the last one is from the Girl Scouts of Central and Western Massachusetts for, to hold their meetings for various dates at Wolf Swamp, using the cafeteria. The dates are listed there. They're on Tuesdays, starting in September through December, approximately 15 participants in that one. The Girl Scouts and the Youth Football Park and Rec one are repeat requests. We get them every year. The Youth Football one, running the field use for their trainings, their drills, is new this year for us.
Is there any of the items in that consent agenda that anyone wants to discuss? Seeing that there isn't, I would entertain a motion.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approve the consent agenda for the June 17th, 2025, school committee as presented.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion? We can't discuss it, right? Anyways, let's just vote. Adam?
Yay.
Kate?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And a yes for me, too.
Thank you.
So now we are moving on to gifts to the school.
All right, so you have, we mentioned earlier in the meeting, the generosity of the Long Meadow Educational Excellence Foundation. And so the school committee has a policy where that requires the committee to formally accept gifts to the schools. And so we're really excited to learn earlier this, or late this year, that LEAF had approved $94,101 in grants for the 25-26 school year. We're really fortunate to have a foundation that is this generous and that supports and incubates creative projects that teachers have in mind. So often, these projects, you know, they start as innovative incubator type of experiences, and then they wind up getting amplified across all of our schools. And so in your packet is a summary listing of all the projects that LEAF has supported. And without trying to name all of them, it might be worth just for folks at home, LEAF grants to support Word Scholars at Blueberry, Circuit Machines at Blueberry, volleyball uprights and nets at Glenbrook, Model Congress work at Long Meadow High School, graphic novels at Long Meadow High School, cello storage racks for the music department, culturally and linguistic diversity training for speech and language pathologists, middle school chorus resources, OwlTastic ecosystem explorers, a hands-on science adventure for fifth-grade science at Wolf Swamp. Just to give you a flavor of some of the, just some of the, the projects that were awarded through the LEAF grant process. So recommend to the committee that you accept the grants, again totaling $94,101 from the Long Meadow Educational Excellence Foundation.
I love some of the titles of these projects, like Nutty for Nonfiction and Giddy for, like, Sign Me Up.
Yes.
I'm Nutty for Nonfiction.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments about the gifts?
Thank you again to LEAF for all the work they do every year.
Yeah, they do an incredible job. They're really invested in, in schools.
We're lucky.
Yes.
I move on the school, I move that the school committee accept with genuine appreciation the gifts to the schools as described in the Gifts to Schools document dated June 17th, 2025.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Adam?
Yay.
Kate?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And a yes for me, too. So now we're moving on to DESI program monitoring.
All right. This has been in your packet for a couple of weeks. We didn't get to it at your last meeting. But actually, somewhat timely that we were able to present it tonight for our new committee members. Sometimes quietly, our directors respond to Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Program Monitoring requirements. And so when I refer to the directors, I mean Director of Student and Family Support, Niall D. Rosari, Director of Special Education, Nicole Paris-Crowe, and our Director of Curriculum, Beth Nelson. And the three of them responded with diligence to the program monitoring requirements that basically monitor how we spend critical grant money, how we support students in some critical areas. So for starters, the elementary, secondary, or the elementary Every Student Succeeds Act requires some monitoring of the Title I, Title II-A, and Title IV-A funds that we receive. Title I is the, is the most critical resource for us in this area. Glenbrook and Wolf Swamp are Title I schools based on the number of low-income families that send their students to us. And so it supports some very specific programming at Glenbrook and Wolf Swamp. We did well with the program monitoring finding We did well with the program monitoring findings there. We fulfilled requirements in twenty-six of the twenty-eight monitoring categories. This is a, I can't underscore enough what a heavy lift this is for, for our directors to respond to the monitoring requirements. They have to pull together a considerable amount of evidence to show how we fulfill the requirements of the grants. And you'll see the six areas that were monitored in conjunction with the Every Student Succeeds Act. So twenty-six out of twenty-eight monitoring categories, they did note that we needed to do a better job posting a school report card to the Wolf Swamp site, so that's been taken care of. And then also ensuring that we are diligent about doing some family and guardian outreach for Title I families, families that might benefit from Title I programming. So we'll be sure to address that in the coming year as well. Nicole Paris-Crowe took the lead on responding to what's called the Tiered Focus Monitoring Project of DESI, and the, they monitored our adherence on a number of standards, dozens and dozens of standards, but the general buckets that we had to respond to included early childhood transitions, student identification, IP development, programming supports and services, secondary transitions, and ensuring that we provided equal opportunities. So again, there, I think we did quite well. A reflection of the diligence of our directors and all the teachers that are involved in these areas. There was only one area that was deemed to be partially implemented, and we have already taken corrective action on that. It was relating to the transition of students from early childhood programs into our preschool and kindergarten. So we're pleased to know that. We jumped on that right away. But I think, you know, they're bound to find some areas to give us some feedback on. It's almost like holding up a mirror. And we're bound to find a few things that we can improve on. Nilda Orizari took the lead on responding to the focused, tiered focus monitoring in the area of English language learner education. You'll see the areas that were, were audited and monitored. Again, Nilda pulled together a considerable amount of information for DESI officials to review. There were a few areas that we were found to be partially implementing in, and Nilda has, as she often and always does, taken the lead to ensure that our implementation will be full in the areas that are projected here. Ensuring that we are identifying and properly serving English language learners when they first join us as students here in Long Meadow. And ensuring that we're properly monitoring them as they make their way through the grades and that we're also making sure that we are providing appropriate opportunity for families to opt out if they choose not to access the services. But documenting that is an area that we needed to tighten up. And then SEI endorsement. SEI stands for, pardon the, all the acronyms to our new members here. SEI stands for Sheltered English Immersion. It's a certification that teachers who serve EL students are required to have. And so we just want to make sure that we are, that teachers who serve EL students have that endorsement when they begin teaching EL students. I think Nilda had actually reported this already to the committee.
Yeah, we were presented on this thoroughly, and I know I brought up a couple of questions. And I know even that part was more like a student coming in after and that one teacher happening to not have, you know, and that just a shift.
Yeah.
And he'd already worked on partnering with administrators in Springfield to improve our, who I was really impressed with.
That's been one of the strengths, I think, of our response, is that it's really encouraged those partnerships with area, school districts and area colleges to ensure that we are, that we have a pipeline of educators and that we have ways to ensure that teachers get that SEI endorsement. And then really ensuring, one of the things that happened is to work closely with Thomas Barrows, who manages our student information system, so that we really want to make sure that we're tracking and monitoring students, EL students in that student information system, Power School. So all those things have, are, have taken place and are already in place. So really pleased with the leadership that the directors provided to, to really reflect the diligence that we have in, in so many areas. And a lot of red tape, a lot of bureaucracy, but at the end of the day, it's important to be compliant in these areas to ensure that we're properly supporting kids. Also perhaps to provide the committee and the community with that reassurance that, in addition to the oversight provided by the school committee, in administration, we have federal oversight, we have DESI oversight that, that keeps us compliant as well. So thanks for the chance to update you on that.
Just, I have a question. What percentage of our student population are English as second language students?
I'm gonna say, I'll bring you back an exact number. I think we're around forty or so, Mr. Mazza. Would you know?
Forty percent?
Forty, forty, forty students.
Including the flaps, so.
So what percent is that?
We're like one, one and a half percent.
Yeah.
But it has gone up significantly in the last two days.
It's gone up, it's gone up, yes.
Yeah, and.
Twenty was high for us a few years ago. Now we're in the thirty to forty.
Oh, okay.
Range.
And then the, the.
So it's pretty significant increase.
And the intensity of the need varies from year to year, too. I mean, sometimes you can have a larger cohort of EL students, but perhaps their level of need isn't as high, and you can have a smaller cohort, but they're, you know, they're, they're just emerging as English speakers, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? I just want to ask one clarifying question. Well, first, I just am always impressed with Nicole Paris-Crowe. And I mean, this is, to be able to have like, oh, only one is partially met, but everything else is like, check, 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 check is very impressive and.
And it's, and it's, it's binders and binders. I'm reflecting it in, in just a small number of slides, but we're talking binders and binders of, of data and evidence that they had to compile.
And so I know obviously who is the district person responsible for that, and I know Nilda is responsible for the multilingual, language learners, but the Title I, is that also Nilda, or who's the?
Nilda and Beth. Beth's office kind of coordinates the budget, but Nilda often, you know, will be involved in some of the programming.
Okay, great, okay.
Title I, we, we use in a variety of ways to support some of our neediest kids.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
Thank you.
Move on to our new school committee assignments. Very, very exciting. So I think I heard from, I don't know how the best way to do this is. Do you, because it's, you just appoint people?
Yeah, well, no, we usually just go through each one and see who volunteers. Some of us may have an agenda that's.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I'm missing a lot of these.
They annotated, I think the last couple of pages on the agenda got cut off, so.
Okay.
I'll add one here as well.
I'll take that.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Yeah.
All right. Jamie already said he wants to do the same.
Oh, assignments. Okay, I caught it. Missing all these pages.
Getting a little lost.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, yeah, okay. And I have.
One-page agenda and then the detailed.
All right, so we can start with the Finance Subcommittee. So previously on the Finance Subcommittee was Jamie, Julie, and Nicole. Julie is her spot on the Finance Subcommittee is open.
I know that Jamie would like to continue on it. I'm happy to also continue on it.
Is there anyone interested in being in the Finance Subcommittee?
Is there a list of the candidates?
Yes.
It's in your packet.
Item number twelve.
Yep, so Finance Sub, I should let you answer. Finance Sub goes over all the things related to the budget. Anything that might be related to the, to the budget. In theory, it meets roughly once a month, sometimes a little bit less frequently, depends, sometimes a little more frequently, depending on what's going on. All subcommittees meet kind of at the scheduling preference of the members of the subcommittee. So whatever time works for the most people on that subcommittee will be the date to that meeting at that time. And then, yes, Tom graciously walks us through a thousand budget-specific things, and then answers all of my many questions while I try to keep up with the math. He's doing very fast in his head. I'm interested.
Okay, great. So Emily, being on the Finance Subcommittee. On the Policy Subcommittee, last year was Julie, myself, and Adam. I obviously love being on the Policy Subcommittee very, very much and would love to continue. Adam, is that something you're interested in continuing with?
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea.
So we have one position on the Policy Subcommittee. And we, we meet as regularly as the Massachusetts policies change, or we get ideas for other things. But it's fun. It's great. It's a really good time.
I will volunteer.
Okay, good.
As long as it's fun.
It is. I mean, if you like to talk about words, it's fun. And read documents.
It's the only place where you can have thirty minutes of conversation about a comma placement.
Yep.
It's good times.
It's fun. You can always log in and join us. Yeah, just for fun. We get into it. All right, so then next we have the Evaluation Subcommittee, which only meets really twice a year. It does have a little bit.
Maybe three.
Maybe three.
Yeah.
A little bit more, I'd say like work than others outside of the meetings, but.
I'm happy to do that one again.
Yeah, me too. And I think Jamie said he'd be fine continuing in everything he is currently in.
Okay.
So he'd be fine. And then naming, we don't have to.
Zach, huh?
Okay. So the Curriculum Subcommittee, this last year was just Nicole and I, and we didn't have a third person. It's also very, very fun. Great, great time. Really good, if you like to talk about curriculum. Maybe only Nicole and I like to talk about it.
We do, we do tend to like that a lot.
I, I, you know, you said, well, your face said that to me. I thought, she looks like she, she should be on the Curriculum Subcommittee. Okay, great. So then next we have the Middle School Building Committee. And Nicole is willing to stay on, and it is a bit of a heavy lift.
Some months more than others. So it's been Julie and I since the Middle School Building Committee was formed several years ago. We don't typically reappoint for that unless somebody's like, I need to come off of that. But since Julie's gone, we need a second school committee representative to join in.
Interested in that.
Yeah, awesome.
Excellent.
Yeah. So then next we have Negotiations.
I'll stay on that.
Nicole will stay on it, and I'm sure Zach will stay on it, right?
I think he would, yeah.
Yep. So we have one open position on negotiations. If anyone's interested in that.
Not my area of expertise.
Yeah, every committee doesn't have to have three, so it's also fine.
We can always come back to it.
As long as there's two, that's good.
And is it, like, will it be?
Warrants and payroll, Jamie's fine with continuing on, but we would need a second, which is off the chair if you're good with that.
I need a vote of that.
Yes.
Mikael, I'm also though interested, there's the Wellness Policy Review Committee.
Oh, yeah.
Adam is involved in.
Yeah, we can get you in there.
Yeah.
It's over two years.
It's a, yeah, it's a cyclical review, which wraps it up. So we probably can leave that unassigned unless, unless the band gets back together, but I.
But I only have to do it if Jamie's not around? Okay, then, no, that's fine.
Just so.
Tell me what to do, we're assigned.
Chair, can I make a motion then?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I move that the school committee designate Jamie Hench to review and approve the warrants and to appoint Mikaela Fitzgerald as his backup.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, and we'll vote. Adam?
Yay.
Kate?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And a yes for me, too.
Can I make another motion?
Yes.
I move that the school committee authorize Jamie Hench to sign payroll sheets.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Seven.
And all right, Adam?
Yay.
Kate?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And a yes for me, too. All right, so next we have the two LPVEC positions. Nicole, do you want to give up?
Sure. So the Corporation meets, both of these meet once per month. The Corporation meets first. That meeting tends to be shorter. It's about a half an hour. It's sort of an overview of the things that are going on. The Director, the Board of Directors is the longer meeting. Adam has been doing this one, and Zach has been, Adam, you've been doing the Corporation, and Zach has been doing the Collaborative. If, I know that Zach said he would be open to continuing the Collaborative unless somebody else would like to tackle it. And in theory, according to their chair, those meetings will be available both in person and on Zoom beginning now.
He loves it. He's so excited.
I would, you know, I would not want to rob any of the new committee members of the opportunity to get involved and really see the wonderful work that they're doing here and how, you know, this is, this is the behind-the-scenes look at how education works in Western Massachusetts. And I, I really think it's a great opportunity for, for some of our newer committee members.
Yeah, yeah. LPVEC, for those who are not yet sure what that is, is the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. So there are seven? Am I correct? There's seven? Thank you. Seven different towns that work together to provide special education services, but also technical and career programs.
Transportation.
And transportation, yes, of course, the busing. I also experienced it, yes.
Is anyone new, interested in any of those roles?
I think, Diane, you noted that this can wait if.
It can't wait.
Or.
Because they don't meet over the summer?
Yeah.
So if you want to think about it.
But it can't wait till past August, so you need a representative by August.
So if we can pin it down tonight, it would be great.
Yes, exactly. Then we can let them know. All right.
All right.
Wait, don't wait.
So then we don't have to assign somebody to Wellness Policy Review?
I think we'll, you know, as Kate mentioned, it, it might come up. I mean, if there's some change in federal or state legislation, but barring that, we're in a pretty good place with our wellness policy. But if, if, if there are changes that land at our doorstep, then we probably would reconvene that committee, and we could at that time appoint a committee member.
All right. So then we have Energy, Energy and Sustainability. Need one school committee representative for. Awesome, perfect. And then we have CL, which is the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow, and I'd love to be on CL. I'll keep going, but if anybody else wants to do it, I'll still go to the meetings, but you can come too, if anybody else wants to. No, okay, I'll keep doing it. That's it, right?
Yeah, because we're not going to vote on, oh, wait, we actually need to vote on, yep, sorry, I'll make a motion. Can I make a motion?
Yep.
Yes, thank you. I move that the school committee appoint Kate Bean to serve on the Middle School Building Committee.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? And so we can just vote for it now? Adam?
Yay.
Kate?
I guess I'm staying.
Nicole?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And a yes for me, too.
Fantastic.
Looking forward to hearing your updates about the middle school building project.
Motion?
Oh, and then we have one final motion, right?
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A. Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, and H, not to reconvene into open session.
All right, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Adam?
Yay.
Kate?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Emily? And a yes for me, too. And that concludes our public meeting for the night. Have a good night, everybody, and we'll see you at the next meeting.